I'd like to call the Board of Trustees regular meeting to order at 6:30 P. M.
Second.
Seconded by Sweattick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Astral?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Here.
Augustine?
Here. We'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. We have trustee minutes to approve, I'd like to take a motion to approve the regular trustee minutes for January 18th, 2022.
Second.
Seconded by Sweattick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good, thank you. And with that, I think we'll move straight into service if that's okay with you guys. I know that Mike's gonna have a long couple days. And no one else decided to commence this evening, so glory to yours.
The only thing that I have to bring up tonight is about the 2022 concrete that, I've been talking with the trustees about it. We sat in on the engineers meeting, we all got the estimates. I just wanted to see what you guys came to, you know, with your discussing this tonight and seeing if you were going to decide which option to go with up there.
We discussed this at the work session last Tuesday. And you want to talk to him?
I think we elected to bid it out. Option two. With, also with a bid for option one in the event the bids come in too high for option two.
Reason being that option three was a little bit higher than our budget allows for this year.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mike, are the bid documents ready?
Are they ready to be put out for bid?
Yeah.
I'd have to discuss that with Angie.
Then you guys better wait.
Because she did ask though what options, and I told her that we would probably be deciding tonight.
So you're not going to do this today because this is advertising for bid if the bid documents aren't ready?
I haven't gotten from Angie yet, but she just, like she said, she wanted to know what options we decided on, so she can go ahead with what she has to do.
Okay, then, you know, it tabled the resolution, but if there's consensus that you guys want to move ahead with that option and
To get the
To get the bid documents prepared and then you can move this resolution forward, this resolution as soon as the documents are ready to be advertised.
So you think within two weeks then? It's maybe a little longer than that.
Yeah.
Probably a little bit longer, I don't know. Well, like I said, once I talk with Angie a little bit more, see where she's at. I mean, she's got a lot on her plate right now too. She's doing every township, so.
Yeah, and that's why it's better for us to get a notice that she can start
Yes.
Preparing them when she has time. I agree with option number two.
That's what I recommended.
And one, and one for the backup.
But that's the worst section, I mean, out of all of our concrete right now. Like we said, that adding that option two on, there's a lot of pads with no sub base and that's gonna create an issue one of these days. We're just gonna drop a truck in a pad, so whether it's one of our plow trucks, a garbage truck, is, we need to address those issues before they, you know, get too bad.
Right, and like we've said a couple times now, there's really nothing underneath that road, so when it comes to stabilization, this will afford us a little bit more money if need be to add to that stabilization.
Yeah.
And option two is substantial. I mean, that's
Yeah.
Still a big chunk that they're gonna get knocked out, so.
Oh yeah, that's about 1,500 feet, I believe.
Just a little bit.
Very good, so you'll contact Angie on that then?
Yep.
Perfect. Do you have anything else for us, Mike?
Nothing really, I guess more just the general public, you know, everybody knows this big snow's coming. We ask that you guys just be patient. We will be there. It's just, gonna be a lot, just be, and be safe. Give the plow trucks some space, so like I said, we will get to you.
And a friendly reminder that not all roads are township roads. We have state roads and county roads
Yeah.
facilitated by other entities.
Yeah, absolutely.
And there is not a secretary in the service building, so people calling wondering what's happening with their roads, they can't answer the phone because they're out plowing their roads.
I got about 40 voicemails last time, but I'm out on the road with the guys, it's, you know, I would rather be out there helping them, trying to get stuff clearer than answering phone calls right away, so. But I will answer voicemails whenever the next day or the day after, once everything's cleaned up, so.
We appreciate everything you guys do.
Absolutely, and they're always welcome to call us. If you guys have any problems, please feel free to call us. I think I'm on for most of the day on department every day too.
So was I.
Very good, thank you. Thank you for all you do, and you are excused if you'd like to go, secondary to the fact that you will be working for her the next couple days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We have Chief Setner is excused this evening because he does not have anything on the agenda, so we'll go straight to you trustee Astral on behalf of Chief Bruce Bob for Fire.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to request appropriations of $137.08 for the 2022 fire inspection stickers. Oh, is this the one we said we didn't have to do, Martha? I never took it off, sorry. I was making, I was making too many other changes and I forgot about gorilla graphics. Strike it from the record. Okay, I would like to make a motion to request appropriations of $1,589.88 for two Mustang ICE Commander rescue suits from Landfall Navigation. The ICE suits will replace the suits that are showing wear and tear as well as some holes.
This is what we discussed at the work session, how they are very pliable and they will fit a multitude of body sizes and types. And will be helpful with rape and rescues like that.
Yeah, we're replacing the two and the association is buying another two.
Perfect.
Let's second.
Can I get a roll call please?
Astral?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
A motion to request appropriations not to exceed $350 for six LED lights for the Commander Card 36 from Strokes &amp; More. And these were the lights that were not purchased when we got the new vehicle, so they're just now buying them.
And it was not to exceed because we don't know what shipping and whatnot?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Can I get a second?
Second.
Astral?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
And we actually have the president of the Firemen's Association who's here tonight, who just accepted a donation. Gus?
We just received a donation to our association from a group of citizens that came together. They put on the Hinkley Holiday Market, raised money through bake sale, raffle sales and calendar sales, donated the proceeds to the association, so we just wanted to say thank you very much. Thank you everybody for your support as we're going through our own pains, but the community continues to develop, so we're glad that our association can help continue to support the department, just like all our trustees are. So, thank you everybody who came together and your continued support.
Thank you, and thank you Nikki for taking care of that.
Thank you.
And then I just wanted to acknowledge that the fire department did receive the 2022 Marx Grant in the amount of $12,827.66. And that is going to be used to purchase new radios, replacement radios for the fire department.
Fantastic.
And that is all I have.
All right, thank you. We do not have a zoning quarterly report today, so we're gonna table that and then we'll move right on to cemeteries. Trustee, what?
The first thing is, we have a deed to sign. Yeah, we're looking for a couple witnesses.
We'll need two witnesses, please.
Thank you Carl.
Thank you Jeff. Technically, we should sign before you sign. Thank you Carl. You might as well still your pen and sign that because I've read today.
The next we have the cemetery report. Third quarter Maple Hill Cemetery, the retaining wall was replaced by CNM Corporation. The township awarded $1,000 grant money for the 2022 from the Division of Real Estate. Airmark for Monument Leveling at Ridge Cemetery. Request and payment received, three burials, two full casket and one cremation, $1,800. Zero lots sold, two footers, $599. Cemetery fourth quarter. Request and payments, seven burials, four full casket and three cremation, $3,225. Twenty-four lots sold, $9,250. And three footers, $1,306. The year-end totals, request and payments, nineteen burials, thirteen fulls casket and six cremations, $9,950. Forty lots sold, one thousand, correction, $15,650. And six footer, six footers, $2,175.
Very good, thank you. Year-end total, $27,775. All right, anything else for cemeteries?
Uh, no. And also I want to make a motion to enter into a contract with United Rentals doing business as Reliable On-Site Services for portable restroom rental and service for 2022 in the amount not to exceed $1,400. This is for the nine months warm weather for the portable latrine.
Seconded by Astral.
Astral?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
There was a question about the old cell phones last meeting. I was in contact with the Medina Summit County Badger Women Shelter and they will accept those. I just, do we need to get a receipt when we turn those in, Martha?
Well, you need to make a motion that they're no longer serviceable or of value to the township and that you all agree to the donation. We do not need any type of value.
So like to make a motion to donate two township cell phones which are no longer in use and not serviceable to the Medina County Summit County Badger Women Shelter.
Second. Seconded by Astral.
Do you have any detail on those phones, Jack, numbers?
They were, I can get that.
Okay.
What do you need, serial numbers off them?
Yeah, you know what, if you could just, I will include that in just as an addendum to this. You guys can go ahead with the motion.
Okay.
Okay, so seconded by Astral. Roll call please. Astral?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
And as far as the reconstruction of the old fire station east wall, I'm still waiting on confirmation of the bid estimate from the architect's office. I reached out to them, they haven't responded yet.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you, and thank you for working on that bid. All right, trustee Astral.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve the 2022 Zoom Video Communication Agreement in the amount of $149 annually for the standard pro license and a Zoom room monthly cost of $49 per month.
Now, this is for one Zoom room?
That is for one Zoom room.
So when we approve this, which Zoom room will be closed? Mine?
Is that what you came to
Yeah.
The understanding with Caesar today?
Today, yes.
And we'll cross our fingers and hope that's, that's it?
Well, all of the recordings of the BZA and zoning commission meetings are on Jim's account and he is now the, I forget what it's termed, if it's the professional or
The basic.
He's got the, he's got the, the regular account. I have the basic account, so mine's probably best deleted because it hasn't been used for anything.
Okay, and you talked to Caesar today, or do I need to do anything with him tomorrow?
He has a ticket for us.
Oh, I saw that email.
And they're gonna try to
24 hours.
Yeah, they're gonna try to work on that to make sure that we can flip that email to our administration email.
Okay.
But just keep in mind, the reason we had two Zoom rooms was for executive session when we were fully virtual. It offered the ability for us, if we were in our different homes, to be placed into a second meeting room and have executive session while everyone else stayed in the other meeting room. And with, I don't know what, where the legislation is at with the, you know, virtual meetings
Right.
At this juncture, so
I thought, yeah.
This is something to consider for future.
I, I did think about that after we talked about that second room last week. And I kind of was thinking the same thing, if you ever need to go into executive session, however, you can't participate right now, so we could always add on a second room if we ever go to that spot again where we can participate virtually.
Okay, yeah, as long as we can add it on immediately, I have no problem with it. Very good, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Sweattick.
And Astral?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Hey, I would like to make a motion to approve the purchase of two Apple MacBook Air 13.3 inch laptops with one mouse and one trackpad, Microsoft Office 365 Personal and Apple Care through Best Buy at a cost, an amount not to exceed $3,000 for trustee Sweattick and trustee Astral. As you both know, I've been pricing these out constantly, but the prices keep changing on me, so the dollar amount that I came to yesterday with Best Buy was $2,670, $607.95. But who knows what it's actually going to be when I go to purchase them, so Martha, I thought we were about to say not to exceed the 3,000, but it should be about the 2,607. And that is also, Martha, I don't think I explained this to you either, that is purchasing the 365 family, which saves us a little bit of money instead of purchasing two separate and then it's up to six people, so if we get another laptop in the administrative building or anywhere, we can add on the 365 to those laptops also. And I will be very happy when this is put to bed.
You've been working very hard on that.
Yeah. Tilled a couple trees, printing all this stuff up.
All right, I just want to make sure you have two Apple cares and you do, that's great.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so
And one of you didn't want a mouse?
The one, Jack wants the trackpad, I want the mouse. And then I just wrote notes at the bottom of this one, the Best Buy pricing, they will match the price at Costco, which is $949 now, $949.99. They will match that one for us. So that takes the total down a little bit from the number that you see there.
And that's why I like Best Buy, the price matching is
Yes. Assuming it goes without a hitch tomorrow, me too.
I, did you guys talk about this publicly? That you decided that you're both getting the same computer? I just cautioned you to make those decisions publicly, but I have no problem with it. I'd like to second the motion.
I think you guys are good to go. I mean, it's, it's I think that there was some, there's only so many options if you want to stick with the Mac, which is seems to work out well for you.
Yeah.
I did, I seconded. Can you get a roll call please?
Astral?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you. Now let's just get, okay, this next one's gonna be a little explaining. Because of the CARES Act, we did get that laptop that trustee Sweattick has been sharing with the zoning office for the last month, so now that he's going to be getting his own laptop, we're going to have Tom take over the laptop, so we're going to just need to move the docking station that's in trustee Sweattick's office over to the zoning office. So, that takes us to, I would like to rescind the motion that trustee Kalina made on May 4th of 2021 to approve the purchase of a docking station, net gear five port switch and installation through Lighthouse Solutions for the zoning department. We no longer need to purchase that docking station because we're going to take the docking station that's in trustee Sweattick's office and move it to the zoning office. Do we have to second anything?
Yeah, we just need a second.
Second.
Perfect.
Second.
Okay, so you
Did you have the date, you said it was May 4th?
It was May 4th, 2021, and that's in your packets with the emails.
So, and we briefly talked about this today, so give me a second as amended.
What are you guys doing? What are you making a motion for?
I am rescinding the motion that Chris made.
This is the rescinding.
Yeah, I'm rescinding it so that then I can
Okay.
Make the next motion.
All right, and Jack, you seconded that?
Yes.
Okay, Astral?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Augustine? Yes.
Okay, so now I need to make a motion to approve the installation of the existing docking station from trustee Sweattick's office into the zoning department through Lighthouse Solutions at a cost of $275.
How do we get that number? Did we hear from Jeff Hart?
Yes, Jeff, email me. It's in your packet also.
Wonderful. All right, can I get a second?
Second.
Astral?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Augustine? Yes.
And just to kind of piggyback on that with the Lighthouse Solutions from our last meeting, when I made the motion for the backup solution, I think Melissa, you had asked me if that covered the administrative building and the fire department? And it does. I did confirm.
That's what I thought, that's great, thank you.
And just a reminder to the public that we are accepting applications for our part-time administrative office assistant and recording secretary.
And those are, I mean, those are separate. Is that now we're keeping them separate or are we still got them combined?
They are combined.
They are still combined, okay.
Very good, and I sent out the newsletter today, I don't know if you guys received it, it had a little button that takes you right to that position
I did.
And the website, so I think that closes on the 7th.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you, and trustee Sweattick, do you have anything else to add?
I do not.
Okay, because you kind of won.
I did.
Um, just really quick for the zoning, want to mention a couple things of interest. One was that we did receive a partial application for a MAP amendment from Highland School Board on the old Hinkley Elementary School building. That will be going before the zoning commission. It was supposed to go before them on Thursday evening, but with the weather coming in, they have canceled their meeting. So if you were planning on attending the zoning commission meeting at 7 o'clock here on Thursday night, it has been canceled. And they are determining with prosecutor's office if they can potentially hold a special meeting to view that, that MAP amendment.
Could you explain the whole process? In just a few sentences?
The short part of it is it will go to the zoning commission, who will probably send it to the planning commission, who will probably send it back to the zoning commission, who will probably send it to the board of trustees. With that said, the trustees and the zoning commission really should not be talking about it with anyone individually unless they are in a public meeting and serving as a public body.
And are there hearings involved?
There will be a hearing involved, yes.
Because of two hearings.
It comes, yes, goes before the zoning commission for a hearing as well as trustees for a hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion to accept William Budd's resignation for, from the BZA. You guys have his letter in front of you in your packets. He had talked to me and then emailed me and said he would be willing to serve until the end of February. So at this time, I'd like to make that motion to accept his resignation.
I seconded, I'm sorry to see him go.
And that'll be, looks like it'll be effective February 28th, 2022.
Augustine?
Yes.
Second. I'm sorry, yes.
Yes, thank you for that. So with that said, we have an additional zoning position open, and when I spoke with Mr. Budd, I explained to him that we already have the positions open to the public. So Suzanne will go ahead and make a note to those positions online to just add that we will have a third BZA position and for the public at home, who need to kind of understand that, who may not have been following along, we have one zoning commission alternate position available. We have one BZA alternate position available and we have two BZA member positions available. So those are all online and also were a part of the newsletter today where there was a button that you could click for the link to the website for those positions. If anyone has interest in them, we will be accepting resumes or letters of interest until the 7th of February. Which I believe is Monday.
It is convenient with the timing, all at once.
We're trying, trying to stay in the loop here. I just wanted to let you know that I am following up based on our conversation at the work session, that we will be looking at the restructuring of the fees for zoning. And that's an endeavor that hasn't really happened since 2018, so we're looking at the different townships around Medina County as to what they're charging and also looking at our internal processes. We will be streamlining and kind of consolidating some of the work efforts and I will be meeting with those departments next week. So just to give you an update on that based on our work session discussion, I've also given you guys the website scope of work and I didn't know if you wanted to review it this evening and add things to it, or if you thought that was better, better done maybe in a work session. Since it'll probably be a little bit more in-depth of a conversation, it is a tentative document.
Yes, I would like to do in a work session, my question here is, have these folks done this preliminarily? Is this a bid for them to do that?
No, it's not a bid. It's a conversation I had with a gentleman, he's in, he's in leadership Medina County with me. And he had mentioned that he was working on Wadsworth's website and he had a project, a scope of work done on, for them and kind of looked at our website and made some changes and tweaks to that scope so that we had something to work off of.
Okay.
So we can have that discussion then at the next work session.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that because
Okay, because it'll be pretty detailed.
Which will have to be, not the 8th, it's gonna have to be
The following.
The following.
Well, that's on my, my notes to chat about as well. If you guys want to have that conversation now, we can, I'll just move over to my post-it note. I cannot make the work session next week because I will have leadership Medina County from 7:30 to 5:30. And so typically never is on a Tuesday, but it just happens to be that Tuesday. So I was just kind of brainstorming, I don't know if you guys want to continue on without me, I know Martha's gonna be out of town too. If you wanted to just cancel it, or if you wanted to see if we could reschedule it for the following day on Wednesday.
I don't have anything on my calendar on Wednesday, could we do it earlier though?
We could. We could do as early as you want, I'm up at 5:30 every day.
I'm not, so it doesn't need to be that early, like maybe 9? Would that
Fine with me. Jack?
Although, do you think we'll be out by 11:30? Or can we just do Thursday? Can we do that? Thursday is wide open.
I cannot do Thursday. Do you want to hold it for the next?
Do you want to cancel it for the 8th and do it for the 22nd? Is that
Well, we would just have a trustee meeting on, on the 22nd, right?
No, we'll have it on the 15th.
Yeah, and then the next work session is 22nd.
Yeah, we, I mean, it's however you guys want to do it, I just wanted to open the door to the conversation. We can cancel it on the 8th and then move forward with the 22nd, which is already on the calendar and it's been published.
I'm okay with that.
That works for me.
Okay.
Because if only half of us are gonna be here.
Okay, sorry about that. I didn't, uh
Well, thanks for giving us enough heads up.
February, we were making that
All right, so we're still gonna do the 22nd at 11:30 though, so that time is not changing.
And actually, Moni, can I ask you to handle that with Suzanne to cancel that work session?
I can handle that.
Perfect, thank you. All right, Martha has been kind enough to hold a finance meeting for Hinkley Township on a Saturday morning. Our fire department looks very excited about that. It will be February 12th at 9:30 a.m. Martha, you said till 11?
Uh, yeah, we'll have, we'll go to 11 with that and then leave another half hour for questions. If you have questions at that point. If you got questions you want me to be prepared for, just email me. Couple people have and that's always nice because I can make sure that I have the, the reports or the information there to answer the questions early.
Thank you Martha, thank you for coming in on a Saturday. It will be virtual, I will make sure that we will have a virtual option for that. Because it's not a formal meeting, there will not be any meeting minutes. It's just a public information meeting. And then the comprehensive plan steering committee meeting dates for the rest of the process are designated for February 22nd, March 29th, and April 26th here at Town Hall at 6:30 p.m. Those will be offered virtually as well. So just wanted to get those out so everyone could see them and have them in front of them. I wanted to talk to the trustees here real quick. I spoke with Arthur at OHM Planning after that last meeting that we had because he kind of wanted to recap. And he had requested that I sent over three projects from last year that, or even in more recent years, that we thought maybe were contentious. So we sent him senior housing, TireMax, and we're sending him Redwood Falls so that he can kind of take a peek at it and understand what the process was. One of the things that he and I had discussed was he has offered to be the point of contact for this process. So if someone has questions, comments, concerns specific to the comprehensive plan or a suggestion, they would contact him directly. And this is something they have done in the past and they are still doing with townships. And it frees up some of our time. And what he is able to do is culminate those thoughts and bring them back to the committee. So he can say, hey, you know, committee members, I received six emails that were specific to conservation developments, for instance. So I wanted to see what your thoughts were on that because in speaking with Chris Studer, she said that she would be willing to put a box in the Hinkley Record that offered that contact information for the public.
As long as he's sharing that information, I have no issue with that.
That was, that was gonna be my only question is would we be copied on it? So if I am understanding that correctly, please tell me if I'm not, is that he's gonna be the point person responding to the emails and the questions and we could be copied on them so we know what the residents are saying?
He is not responding. He is just collecting them.
Just collecting it.
And then what he does is he culminates them and gives them to our committee.
Okay.
And that's been passed, had to be with those planners just because what it does is it kind of silos all of those questions, comments, and concerns to that point person. And then that's part of his job is to put together some of the ideas that are coming from the public to, to address the committee.
I'm fine with that as long as we have access to it also.
Okay. All right, perfect. I will let him know. Thank you for that. And.
There's lots of questions.
Just really quick, will OHM have to hold on to those records, preserve them so that they're available for public records requests?
Yes. My knowledge, we would have it so that, like he said, we would have him copy-ups in some capacity, which would then make it a public record. Did you have a question too?
Yes, and I have to go back one conversation there. The, the trustees held a special meeting for the steering committee discussion.
Correct.
Can you address the minutes to that? How they will be handled?
Those minutes were a little bit different. But they will, we will still maintain the same process.
Sure.
The only reason that there will be different was they will be very lengthy. Jen is our proctor from the fire department, and she has also come on as our recording secretary for all of those meetings.
And when would they be available to the trustees for approval? Before the next?
They will be available before the next steering committee meeting. But that was a lengthy meeting, so I'm sure it's gonna take her some time.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Did you have a question, Jim?
Same with record retention requirements, can you address that?
Very good. Thank you. Okay. We decided for the work session, I wanted to touch base with you guys and talk real quickly about interviews. Do we want to schedule interviews for those people who are applying for the positions for the zoning boards and the assistant position? Since that's gonna be coming up here on Monday.
It's gonna be on Monday next week. Yeah, do you typically do it the week of or the following week? So like if we're closing, we're no longer accepting applications on the seventh, the final day? Is it typical to start scheduling interviews on like Wednesday, Thursday, the ninth and 10?
Yeah, just to, you know, just to make those boards full. That's, you know, and I've spoken to that concern over and over and over again. Full board is the most effective and efficient board, in my opinion. So we would typically do them in the evening so that working folks can be able to get in on time to be a part of that interview process. So like maybe Wednesday, I think Wednesday is a BZA meeting actually, so maybe the 10th?
And you said you're not available on Thursday, the 10th?
I'm not.
Okay.
Friday? Do people generally not want to do it on a Friday evening?
I would imagine they would not. We haven't known that we've scheduled.
Come on, how much fun would that be? Could we do, can we do, is it too soon to do Tuesday? It's the day after, right?
Yeah, I was just thinking, I have a schedule for 5:30, so I probably could be here by 6:00.
Oh, wow, it's all day for you?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a long day.
7:30 to 6:30. Yeah.
You want to do the following Monday, the 14th?
14th, which is Valentine's Day. It's a great way to spend the evening.
Well, I've been married 14 years, so I assure you there's nothing romantic planned, so I'm fine with that. But I know, I know Jackie's.
Jack's a little. Jack's the romancer with Colleen, so.
We always go the next day so I can get the discount.
I'm, I'm sure Jim has nothing romantic planned, but sorry if you do.
Wow.
Well, and you know what? This is something that we can even go back, look at our calendars and talk through Suzanne about because she's the conduit to all of us. So we don't have to make a decision today, but it's just something to think about so that we can start, you know, planning those interviews. I anticipate that township will be closed on Thursday and Friday here at the administration offices. That's just a tentative. I've told our staff here to take their work home so if they can work remotely in any capacity Thursday and Friday, I don't anticipate that these offices will be open. So that would be something that Suzanne could easily do from home if we can coordinate a date. And I have one more thing from Martha.
Melissa, does the BZA have to have a minimum number of members to make a decision?
They have to have a quorum, which is five. So we need to hustle.
Well, no, they don't need five. They need, they need a quorum, which is four, but the applicant has the option of continuing or not a full board.
And we're just in a really unique position. We've never been in before with three members and one alternate.
Because if it's two and two, it's a negative. So they have that option of waiting for a full board.
And if the alternate can't serve, then you only have three. So I did make a recommendation to the trustees at the work session and recommended that Lindsay Rubel be contacted as a potential person for the BZA. Because when I spoke with Mr. Budd, he had given me characteristics of what he would like to see on that board. And I don't have my notes in front of me, but I'm sure if you listen back to the work session, one of them was analytics, legal. And I just thought of Lindsay right away. Yes, negotiation, that's right. Good job. And I just thought of Lindsay right away. So I did reach out to her and asked her if she would be interested in it and told her that if she was, she'd feel free to go ahead and send in a resume for that BZA member position. I just think she would be well-suited there. And I did recommend to you guys multiple times that Bill Schaefer be moved up with his experiences on the industry. And I think he's served on that board for about seven or eight years. So those are my recommendations, but we'll see who comes in via the resumes. I have nothing else except for this one last motion. One more. Martha just handed it to me. I'd like to make a motion to pay the 2022 Annual BEPA Phase Two NPDES MS4 Stormwater Management Program for Medina County Commissioners at a total of $750. Second.
Asher?
Yes.
Swyder?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Yes. Martha, whenever you are ready, move on to you.
All right, so just hopping right back to that finance meeting, just briefly, just to give folks a, just a brief overview. I will have an agenda, but what the goal is is so that residents can understand the revenue sources to the township, the allowances with each fund, how the state provides revenue, how the federal government provides revenue, all of our different resources. And then to go from there and then kind of go through the process of how we budget that, working with the county auditor within their allowances. And just, just the formula, that it's, it's very well thought out, it's very defined. And, and then the, the role of the trustees in that and the fiscal officer, we're kind of a check and balance for each other in that way. And, and then questions regarding that. Happy to answer any specific questions. There was an issue, and I'm just gonna touch on it briefly, that I was listening on Zoom on the steering committee meeting, and one of the committee members indicated that I would be able to provide the revenue that, that the proposed senior housing development would be bringing into the township. I do not have that information. Nobody has that information right now. Right now, it is a vacant commercial property. That's what it's assessed at. That's what the current inside mileage and tax revenue is coming in on the different levies. And that can be determined once the structures are built and assigned evaluation by the Medina County Auditor. And then we will have an idea if, because they're rentals, they're commercial development, they're not a residential property, all those different factors go into play. And each of those, you know, attached units are gonna have different value assigned to them in the different phases that they're built. So it's not that I don't want to answer that question, it's just that I, I cannot answer that question. There's other things that we can discuss based on past history and, and quantify it, but that one, you know, I, I flat out, I just, I don't have that information or knowledge to do that. So just wanted to address that real quick before we moved into anything else. So in that line, we have our certificate of estimated resources that I had given to the trustees at the work session from the county auditor. And I need a resolution to accept that in the amount of $9,732,083.10.
So moved.
Second.
Asher?
Yes.
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
And that's, that's a document that the auditor gives us after we provide him all of our end-of-year carryovers. They get a better idea from the state of Ohio and some of the valuations of local government funds that will be coming from the state. And that gives us that $9.7 million in order to then proceed with permanent appropriations. Right now, we've been operating on temporaries because we didn't have a solid number. So that's the next motion I'm gonna ask the trustees to make is a motion to approve the 2022 permanent appropriations effective February 1st in the amount of $7,146,168.15.
Can I have that number one more time?
That was the document I sent you guys yesterday.
So moved.
Second.
And it would be, why is, once you get your computers, just save that document under your, your computers because it'll help you throughout the year.
Yeah, and you'll have those numbers on your, every two each, on your appropriation status, you'll have these permanent appropriation numbers in there. You'll see them coming down and being encumbered in different things. If anybody would like a copy of it, I'm happy to provide it. I'm happy to email it. But again, it's, these are the same numbers that will be on all the future appropriation status sheets for the rest of the year. They're just the permanence. Did I do the roll call?
No.
Okay, babble, babble. Asher?
Yes.
Swyder?
Yes.
Yes. Fund status. Fund status right now is $5,965,118.76, of which $1,643,278 are gold investments and $4,901,859.8 are in primary checking. And that's another thing we'll discuss for anyone interested Saturday morning. We'll talk about what investments we have and, and what we do with that revenue. And lastly, could I get a motion to pay the Home Depot bill electronically from here on end? We're running into a problem with the U.S. Postal Service and, and delays. It's not all their fault, but Home Depot, they can get a check and then they don't apply it for like a week. So in order to avoid any late penalties, it's just easier for me when I get the bill and I get everything that I can, I'll do it to coincide with the meeting, but I'd rather just do an ACH on it so it doesn't get lost in the mail.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second. By Asher?
Asher?
Yes.
Swyder?
Yes.
Augustine? Yes. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Very good. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills for $105,355.57. Second. Second by Asher.
Asher?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And we will turn it over to the floor. Does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns?
Making long 1941, Parker. I was just curious if you guys had discussed recording trustee meetings. And we talked about that a couple trustee meetings ago, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. That was discussed at the work session. And at the last meeting, I think that our endeavor to update the website will be the first phase of that so that we have a website that will be able to structurally hold those meetings in some capacity or, you know, share it onto a YouTube channel or however we just design it. But the website is the first priority in that stage process was the way that I had interpreted it.
Agreed. And that's, that's why we're looking at that scope of work for the update of the web. That's also gonna take care of storing that information. And part and parcel, that will be develop the record retention requirement for those.
Well, we have that. We do have a record.
Yeah, that's, that's already defined.
As far as how long we keep them?
Yeah. The recordings.
I kind of took it as it's a watch before you crawl approach. And right now, it's figuring out the scope of work to revamp the website so that that gets squared away first. And then we're gonna probably talk about that more in detail and see what direction we want to go, if it's gonna be audio, if it's gonna be video. We'll decide then.
And it is something that I had him incorporate into the scope of work for us was that kind of mentality of recording of some capacity. So we are working on it. Do you have any in your mind sort of deadline by when you want it, you want it all to be done? In the public sector, there's never a deadline. That's what I've learned. We do our best in meeting every week now. You know, we can only make motions every two weeks. And now that we've just canceled the, the eighth work session, we won't meet again till the 22nd to discuss that scope of work. So we will stay on it. We will do our due diligence, but I don't have a timeframe in mind. I wish it was done back in 2017, but it wasn't.
We'll get there.
I mean, I don't even see, I mean, realistically, I don't even see us opening up for bids until April because we have to.
You don't have to, you won't have to open it up for bids.
Oh, yeah?
No, that's why I asked you each to pick a vendor so that you come to the table and we can evaluate the three vendors and actually even have them present if we'd like.
Oh, well, then I asked that question because I thought that's what, I thought we were creating the scope of work so that we could put it out for bids.
The scope of work actually is really the best foundation for each bidder to come in or vendor come in in this, in this capacity and have the exact same scope so that their numbers correlate.
Okay.
Because if I had a scope of work that was different from yours, our numbers, our estimates were completely off.
Right. You're not comparing us to Apple.
Okay.
I'm glad I asked that because I didn't understand it.
Any other questions? Comments? Concerns? Any other questions, comments, concerns? Perfect. All right, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at 7:19 p.m.
Second.
Second by Asher?
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, everybody.
We could have just had the 40-minute Zoom meeting. We didn't have to pull our hair out all day.